Good morning. Unfortunately, Shiloh Pentecostal Church Choir will not be available today to begin our services. A member has fallen ill and they just could not get here this morning. But we wish them well and we thank them for future commitments. Mr. Town Crier, please come forward.
Hear ye, hear ye, by my ten tenabulations, please draw near and give kind attention. As we, after July the 4th, will celebrate the 249th year of our independence, it is my great pleasure to begin and announce the start of the Borough of Somerville reorganization meeting.
Please stand for the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Who'd brought stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I'd like to call up Sergeant First Class Retired, United States Army Andrea Adair, a 21-year veteran and also the Commander of the American Legion Post 12 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Putting on a different hat, I'd like to ask Reverend Deacon David Lang to present our invocation.
Almighty and eternal God, as we stand at the beginning of this new year, we confess our need for your presence and your guidance as we face the future. We, each, have our hopes and expectations for the year that is ahead of us. But you alone know what it holds for us. And only you can give us the strength and the wisdom we need to meet its challenges. In the midst of life's uncertainties, in the midst of life's inevitable disappointments, in the midst of life's temptations and the pull of our stubborn self-will, help us to humbly put our hands into your hand and to trust you and to seek your will for our lives. Help us not to lose our way, but to have the courage to do what is right in your sight. We pray for our nation, our state, and especially our Borough of Somerville. Bless, guide, and protect our leaders during this joy-filled and even difficult times. We pray especially for the protection of all those who serve in our armed forces, law enforcement, firefighters, and first responders. And we thank you for their commitment to defend our freedoms, preserve our laws, and protect our lives, even at the cost of their own lives. Be with their families also and assure them of your love and concern for them. As we look back over this past year, we thank you for your goodness to us, far beyond what we have deserved. May we never presume on your past goodness or forget all your mercies to us. May they instead lead us to repentance and to a new commitment to make you the foundation and center of our year. And so, oh Father, we thank you for the promise and hope of this new year and we look forward to it with expectancy and faith. This I ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, who by his death and resurrection has given us both help of this world and in the world to come. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. First order of business, we will have the oath of office for Councilman Randy Pitts. Holding the Bible will be his wife Joan. And onstage with him will be his son Ray. And the oath will be administered by County Clerk Steve Peter.
Repeat after me. I, Randall Randy Pitts.
I, Randall Randy Pitts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Borough Councilman for the Borough of Somerville.
Borough Councilman for the Borough of Somerville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next order of business is the oath of office for Andrew Conti. Holding the Bible will be his wife Gabriela Fernandez. And onstage joining him will be his sons Alberto and Rio. And the oath will again be administered by County Clerk Steve Peter.
All right. Repeat after me.
Sure.
I, Andrew Conti.
I, Andrew Conti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Borough Councilman for the Borough of Somerville.
Borough Councilman for the Borough of Somerville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Sluka.
This reorganization meeting is called order in accordance with the Old Public Meetings Law. In accordance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of January 4th, 2025, was published in the Courier-News and Star-Lazzer and placed on the Borough's website. And the same notice of this meeting was local placed on the Vol. Support at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call for 2025 Mayor and Council, please.
Mayor Ronnie Gaddis.
Here.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Councilman Andrew Coffey.
Here.
Councilman Leslie D.
Here.
Councilman Randy Pitts.
Here.
Councilwoman Gina Stravick is excused this afternoon. Councilman Roger Room.
Here.
Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the election of the 2025 Council President.
I make a motion. Roger Room, Council President.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Coffey.
Yes.
Councilman Leslie D.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Councilman Roger Room.
Yes.
Congratulations. Look forward to working with you again.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point.
So this is always an interesting endeavor because, one, the person typically has no idea that they are going to receive the Citizen of the Year. And two, trying to keep it a secret. It's a closely guarded secret between Kevin and myself. And I know Kevin runs a contest each year in Borough Hall to see if they can guess who it is. The interesting thing about this is when we put the write-up together for this plaque, the engraver called us back and said, "You got too much. It's going to take two plaques in order to put all the information on here that's needed." So, and this is an interesting year because it's actually a duo. There's two. So, but I only see one of them here today. So I'd like to ask Jason Crask to please come forward. Jason's going to represent not only himself, but his wife as well. Because this is presented to Jason and Jamie Crask.
Only dressed for part, I would have known.
He dressed perfect. So now, mind you, this is only some of what Jason and Jamie do. Borough of Somerville 2024 Citizen of the Year. It is with grateful appreciation that I present the 24 Citizen of the Year Award to Jason and Jamie Crask for their outstanding volunteerism and public service to the residents of the Borough of Somerville. Jason and Jamie Crask have exemplified the highest standards of volunteer public service through their contributions to the community and their passion of helping others in Somerville Borough. Jason has served on the Somerville Recreation Committee for over a decade and the founder of the Somerville 5K Turkey Trot. Since 2018, Jason has served on the Somerville Planning Board, responsible for the review and planning of mixed-use redevelopment projects, creating a vibrant, award-winning downtown district. Jason is also the coordinator for the Somerville Office of Emergency Management. Jason's volunteer service stretches far beyond government, serving on the Drew McLaughlin Memorial Fund, raising funds to support local programs, scholarships for Somerville High School students, and holding events to raising funds and awareness about brain cancer. He and his wife Jamie founded the Somerset County Farmers Market, which completed a tremendous initial year at the Somerville Middle School. Jamie and Jason are a dynamic duo. Jamie has been a teacher in Perth Amboy since 2007. She not only finds time to support Jason's efforts, but equally demonstrates her exceptional volunteer leadership and passion through her work with the Somerville Alliance for Food Education, fostering awareness and access to healthy foods. Jamie and Jason, along with the team from SAFE, hosted Thanksgiving event annually and this past year served over 175 meals that were prepared at the People Care Center, of which Jason serves on their nonprofit board. Jamie is also an elected board member of the Board of Education, ensuring the highest quality of education for our children. The combined volunteer efforts of Jason and Jamie have strengthened Somerville Borough. They are an inspiration to others. Whether it's organizing a community cleanup, responding to an emergency, raising funds, or being a champion for our children, their commitment to the betterment of Somerville is undeniable. Jamie and Jason have found the time to make a tremendous difference in Somerville while raising their daughter Nora, who is a rising gymnastics star and often found volunteering with her parents as well. Somerville expresses our gratitude and appreciation to Jason and Jamie for their tireless efforts and dedication to the community. It is my distinct honor and privilege as mayor that I present to Jason and Jamie Crask this most distinguished and worthy award.
I apologize if I knew I would have dressed apart. I did not pick myself in the pool either, so. But it is an honor. But all of those things that the marriage has mentioned, none of them were done by just me or my wife or the two of us. There's teams, volunteers, the public, the council, the administration. A lot of people do a lot of work to make all those things a reality, so. I thank everybody for this and Mayor and Council, thank you very much. I do appreciate it. I'm honored.
Again, that's only half of what we had submitted for the plaque. Citizens, honored guests, Borough employees, fire department, rescue squad, police personnel, Somerville Borough Council, friends and family, good afternoon and happy new year. The state of our borough continues to be strong, promising, and the talk of New Jersey on how to create success. Real economic, social, and cultural growth doesn't take place in the halls of Trenton or the streets of DC. It takes place in our small towns across this great country of ours. And Somerville will continue to lead that charge here in New Jersey. It's amazing the success this borough has seen in the faces of statewide and national economic challenges. Somerville's soaring housing values have provided a strategic investment and economic opportunity for many who choose to call Somerville home or to locate their business in. Our Main Street continues to thrive. Our schools continue to provide the most wonderful, diverse education for all. And our neighborhoods are seeing significant reinvestment in people's homes. This did not happen by accident. Vision, determination, hard work, and good people making smart decisions for the right reasons have created opportunity. And that opportunity extends into our schools, our arts and entertainment, our recreation, our historic and environmental efforts, and the list goes on. We have prepared a foundation that will continue to benefit our borough for decades to come. I've tried to make a priority of bringing people and ideas together in an open and public forum and a willingness to work with each other, regardless of party, for the betterment of Somerville. This approach has been embraced by past councils and I thank them for that. We have proven that government can be accomplished in a civil fashion as ladies and gentlemen, with character and dignity. We have separated politics from decision-making and good governing for the betterment of Somerville, and I anticipate that continuing. This past year saw many significant events for our borough, with more on the horizon. We will continue the work set out last year as our blueprint as we look forward to '25. The Somerville Emergency Services Facilities Building is complete and will be moved into in the first quarter of '25. Decades in the making, it will house the Police Department, Fire Department, Rescue Squad, and the Office of Emergency Management. I thank the people and the hard work of the Emergency Services Facility Committee, which organized, developed, designed, and implemented this building-for-the-future undertaking. There were many on this committee over the years and your hard work, now complete, will have lasting effects on emergency services in the borough. Please stand if you were involved in this undertaking. After many months of us fighting back against the state, which we do fairly often, to help them understand and revise the rules to reflect Somerville's needs, the Community Solar Program for the landfill has finally been approved. This will provide discounted electric power to low and moderate-income households within Somerville. This project will also allow the borough, through the developer, to finally cap the landfill areas that need to be remediated. To complete this capping, the borough has also negotiated over $10 million in grants from state agencies to do this. This community solar program will bring cost savings to many families in the borough and it will be at no cost to the taxpayer. Construction should commence around the summer of '25. The borough has always shouldered their responsibility very well for affordable housing. Whether that was implementing the Section 8 Housing Program, one of the few in Somerset County, building the Senior Citizen Building on Mountain Avenue, or understanding the rental rates in Somerville and monitoring their affordability, the next huge and historic step forward in our affordable housing has just been implemented. I began discussions with two developers this past year. And while their projects were already approved, my discussion centered on helping them understand their larger community responsibility despite having their site plan already approved. They both agreed willingly and Somerset Development has made a financial contribution to the newly-established Housing Trust Fund. Additionally, DGM Properties, the Storms family, have contributed six rental units to become Somerville's first dedicated affordable units in the borough. These are very significant and historic steps for Somerville. In addition, any new proposed redevelopment will have an affordable housing requirement. Our full affordable housing plan will be approved this year in the state-mandated timeframes. Our Public Safety Committee has been reestablished and I've asked Teresa Bonner to be the council liaison to this very important committee. I look forward to working with these civic-minded folks to review and make recommendations to council on ways to improve our overall borough safety. The borough saw the Farmers Market come to town every Sunday. Yes. And every Sunday you'd see Jason and Kevin out there directing traffic in their vests. But what an awesome success. An absolutely awesome success. Our redevelopment committee will see the addition of former Mayor Dennis Sullivan to it, joining former Mayor Mike Kerwin, who both add significant experience, forward vision, and historic perspective to the committee. I firmly believe that the experience of those that have served in the mayor's seat is a great benefit to the borough's future. We will continue to work with the owners of the properties damaged or impacted by the West Main Street fire. This is a very important corner and any further delays in addressing their building is having a detrimental effect on other businesses and our downtown. And this will not stand. With the Police Department moving, the property will be opening up. The borough can now take steps to identify the best end use for this property. Long an abandoned property, the former Color Technology property on Cornell Boulevard is finally seeing movement. Current investigation of the site will now include a grant for the demolition of all structures on the site prior to cleanup. And we will continue working with the DEP and the EDA to apply for and acquire grants for the continued environmental investigation and the final remediation of that site. While our volunteer services are second to none, the challenge we have today is engaging people to be an active part of their community. And social media commentary is not what I'm talking about. We need folks to put down their phones, stop focusing on what they think everyone else should be doing or what they think is being done wrong, and step up and do something right for your community. Stop the keyboard warrior comments and be a part of your community. I will work with our fire squad and OEM to create a recruitment campaign to engage, recruit, and retain members for their departments. Their value is not fully recognized until you need them or you don't have them. Somerville was Paul Robeson's home. And this space we are in is where he went to school. And the church across the street is where his father was pastor. And these were his formative years. I will establish a Paul Robeson Memorial Committee to raise awareness, necessary funds, select an appropriate site, and provide for a fitting monument for all of his accomplishments. A couple of... Thank you, Mike. A couple of special thank-yous to Bernie Nevada. Bernie provided a steady hand as the chair of the Planning Board for decades. Whether you know it or not, his thumbprint is on every corner of this borough and every project in Somerset County. The borough will miss you, Bernie, and I will miss a good friend. And a big thank you to people like... Now, I'm going to leave some of you out, but people like Art Adair, Richie O'Neil, Frank McAlevey, Roy Gunselman, Dave Vaughn, Kenny McCormick, the master of the one-hour meeting, Kenny. I know I've left some out. But these folks, these are folks who have spent over 50 years of service to our borough. They are what has made Somerville what it is. You have other folks. Mike Kerwin, Rich Reitman, Tom Mitchell, Rick St. Pierre, Dennis Sullivan, the entire Bigelow family. It's our job to continue this level of commitment that these folks and folks like them have to our Somerville. So we thank all of you. We have a volunteer fire department and rescue squad that is second to none. And when the chips are down, these are the men and women you want bursting through your front door. Our Police Department are intelligent, well-trained, great men and women, and the department is flourishing under Chief Manning. Our volunteer committees, commissions, and boards make this borough what it is. They are dedicated people who want to make a difference in where they live. There is no better job in the world than being a mayor or a councilperson of this borough. And only those that have served truly understand what I speak of. It's an inordinate amount of time taken away from you personally and from your families. But the rewards of helping to build a great community are returned tenfold. As much as things change around us, Somerville remains this constant that lends stability to this entire region, which other municipalities try to emulate. We have this wonderful shared experience in our two-and-a-half-square miles of awesome and we all call it Somerville. You see, we all chose to live in a borough that is filled with opportunity and optimism. We live in a borough that has the best schools, the best housing opportunity for all walks of life, the best volunteer spirit anywhere in the state. We choose to live in a place where children grow up with a slice of America. Every nationality, every income bracket, every color, religion, and ethnic group. We choose to live in a place where... We choose to live in a place where politics takes a backseat to good decision-making. We live in a town that's pretty much a Norman Rockwell painting, and I love every minute of it. Those before us in these seats have set the groundwork for what we have, and it is our responsibility to continue that great work and help all of our citizens realize the optimistic opportunity and shared responsibility we all have to our borough. So do I have an optimistic outlook? Absolutely. And I don't have any other way to look at our borough, nor should you. To the Borough Council, I say thank you. As your time serving our borough is never fully recognized, I ask that all of your decisions be based on neighbors helping neighbors and working together to better this borough. And when all else fails, and I've said this a number of times before, go have a beer with a firefighter. They have a way of shedding light on issues that is clear, concise, and sometimes in very plain and direct language. But it's language that's always in the best interest of Somerville. We live in a very special place. Somerville has this mix of people, personalities, economics, and culture. It's a place that holds the cool vibe of an urban city, but with the safety, warmth, and security of a small town. It's a mix of moms and dads, kids, grandkids, grandparents, and a mix of arts and lifestyles. Best of all, it's a mix of volunteer spirit, responsibility to our neighbor, and that is what keeps our town thriving and a place where families want to live and people want to visit. The mix we have here in Somerville is absolutely magic. So, as we enter 2025, I wish great prosperity for all the good people of our borough in this beautiful place we all call home. God bless our troops, God bless our country, and God bless our Somerville. Thank you. Was that 12 minutes? This is something I started a while ago, and I think it's very important, and I do this at a number of different functions. It's recognition of those that are currently serving or those that have served in our armed forces. And I think it's important for community members to understand who their neighbors are. So if you have, if you are currently serving or you have served and are a veteran, please stand and be recognized. Okay, next up is the oath of office for the First Aid and Rescue Squad Chief. Would Mike Bigelow please come forward? Holding the Bible will be Sylvia and Sean Bigelow, his parents, with the oath administered by County Clerk Steve Peter. Now, I've known Mike Michael since he was, I don't know, three? Two, three, four, somewhere around there? And it's just, it's a very gratifying thing to see the next generation taking over. He was led and educated by two wonderful parents who understood what it means to be a part of a community. So they should be very proud.
All right. May your right hand repeat after me. I, Michael Bigelow.
I, Michael Bigelow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Chief of the Somerville First Aid and Rescue Squad.
Chief of the Somerville First Aid and Rescue Squad.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Mike is taking over from Jim Barry. I don't know if Jim's here. Are you here, Jim? No, he may not be, but kudos to Jim. He's served probably in every capacity in the squad that's known and unknown. And we owed a debt of gratitude to Jim as well. Next up is the oath of office for the First Aid and Rescue Squad Officers. Would Alice Kondo Deputy Chief, Justin Bigelow Deputy Chief, please come forward with your oath administered by County Clerk Steve Peter?
Have you raised your right hand? Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Justin Bigelow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Deputy Chief for the Somerville First Aid and Rescue Squad.
Deputy Chief for the First Aid.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
Okay, item number 16 is the appointment of the standing committees, which I will make. Item number 17 are the council liaison positions for 2025. I will also make those. Number 18 is the appointment of the planning board members, Larry Cleveland and Chris Addicks. I will make those appointments as well. The committees appointed by the mayor, Seniors and Veterans Committee, Public Safety Committee, Emergency Services Facility Management Committee, Green Team, and Cannabis Class 5 Committee. I will make those appointments as well. Item number 24 is appointment of the planning board members by the council. Do we have a motion? Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
Okay, appointment of the zoning board of adjustment by the council. Do we have a motion for those listed?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
And the Board of Health positions for those listed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
For the next items on pages five through eight, I will make all of those appointments with the consent of council. I'll ask for a motion for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
Okay, at this point I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
Meeting is open to the public. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
Okay, we have consent resolutions. Items number 001 through 036, which is essentially housekeeping in preparation for the coming year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Cobby?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn Dene?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Pitt?
Yes.
Council President Roger Brum?
Yes.
Okay, and before we go into our benediction, I just want to recognize a few folks. Please hold your applause, and they're in no particular order. We have County Commissioner Sarah Sui, County Clerk Steve Peter, who held an active role in today's events, former Mayor Dennis Sullivan, former Mayor Mike Kerwin, former councilman Grant Brady, former councilman and Board of Adjustment Chair Art Adair, former council and former fire chief Richie O'Neil, former council Roberta Carpanes, former council Margaret Weinberger, also the Somerville Democratic Chair, former council Phil Decker, and former councilman Tom Mitchell, the rock star. We have former chair of the Downtown Association, Rich Reitman, and the former Republican Chair as well. Our employees, we have Kevin Sluka, Xena Van Ness, Rodney Hadley, Paige Elster, Kathy Gert from Recreation, Colin Driver, our Director of Redevelopment, Michael Cole, our Planner and Engineer. Jason Craska, yes, as well. Thank you. The squad, we have Steve Weinman, Fred Pecilio, Mike Lapitaske, and we had a whole group of squad folks here earlier. Fire chiefs Frank McAleavy, Greg Surrace, and we do have a couple of former firefighters and active firefighters here in the audience as well. Planning board member Barry Van Horn, also a firefighter. Planning board, we have Jason Craska, Environmental Commission, we have Geraldine DiSappio, Sandy Ben Skoder, Planning Board Andrea Dair, Historic Advisory March Sullivan, Barry, Cultural and Heritage Linda Barth, Greg Jobin from the Fire Police, John Prudential from the Board of Health, Kenny McCormick. One hour, Ken. I'm closing in on it. Rick St. Pierre from the DSA and the Regional Center, Denise Van Horn from the Board of Ed, and Eric Alvarez from the Zoning Board. We have with us Rod Hirsch from Tap Into and Mike Deek from My Central Jersey. And a big thank you to David Lang, our town crier as well. And our Somerville Police Department, we have an officer present here today as well. And then just a quick shout out to my wonderful wife who encouraged me to get back in this game again because she wanted, she wanted me out of the house. My kids Brian, Annie, Ian, Brendan, and Maura, my granddaughter Danny Lynn, and my college friend and his son Josh, who, don't talk to Randy, he's got all my secrets from when I was 20 years old, so don't raise your hand, Randy. And a big thank you once again to Kevin and Xena for organizing today. It's not an easy task. It takes, the day after Thanksgiving is when they begin planning for this reorganization, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort, and we appreciate that very much. After this event ends, we will have some light refreshments in the cafeteria. You would just go out this door or that door, walk down the hall, and either make a left or a right, and it'll lead you right into the cafeteria, and we'll have some refreshments and a little bit of food for you as well. So with that, I will ask for the benediction. Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on all those who are assembled and all those who have been invoked during these proceedings. You know our many needs. Hear us and help us. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll ask council for a motion for adjournment.
Settle.
Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.